Planning Board Meeting for Village of Airmont. Okay, let me do that again. I'd like to call this meeting to order the Planning Board Meeting for the Village of Airmont Thursday, May 26 via Zoom, 7:00 PM. And we have a flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. There we go. Okay. Or is it Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America.
Republic.
The Republic.
Which stands.
Which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
The equal of liberty, justice. For all.
I'm going to do the roll call. Chairman Freeland.
Here.
Member Cornelius.
Here Suzanne.
Member Friedman.
Yeah.
Member Grinberger.
Yeah.
Member Roth.
Here.
Member Blumenberg. Ad hoc member Blumenberg. Shimon Blumenberg. Okay, he's not here. And ad hoc member Pinkus Glover.
Here.
Hi Pinkus, how are you?
Hi.
Okay.
Welcome.
Now, on the minutes, the only ones that can approve them, Maurice, you weren't here at the last meeting. So it has to be.
In the building. It's my rules, yeah.
I don't know who's on making the. Hold on. Would be Yehuda, Maurice, and Mordecai, and John.
Okay, so I didn't, I actually did not read them. Were they included in the packet?
I put hard copies in the packet.
Okay.
If you didn't get a chance, we can do it next.
I missed that, yeah, so I did not read them.
That's okay. Then we'll start with the first application.
Unless someone else can do it. Unless you have three who did it.
Well, no, we need, we need at least three, and I don't know that we have.
No.
So, because, that's fine. Do you want to just start with the continued public hearing?
Yeah, so I actually did not print the revised agenda, so the first one is Skill Builder, Skill Building Center?
Yeah, the continued public hearing for Yeshiva, I think, School Building Center, who requested an adjournment to the June 23, 2022 meeting.
Okay, so I make the motion to continue that public hearing.
I'll second.
And, and that's June 23 in 1900 via Zoom?
Well, I would say, we should say either, because right now, it's in person unless there's another extension. Right now, we're on.
Or 7:30 PM at the Village Hall, right?
Right, 7:30 PM for in-person, 7:00 PM via Zoom. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch who was the second on that.
It was me.
Okay, thank you, Mordecai. I think here is. Shimon.
Okay.
I just want to make sure he's on. Okay. All in favor to continue that?
I make the motion to continue it to that date, then, June 23, 2022, either 7:00 PM via Zoom or 7:30 in-person, Village Hall.
Okay. No one opposed, correct? Okay.
Well, I approve, yeah.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for the Airmont Schule at 16 Murray Drive, who requested an adjournment to the June 23, 2022 Planning Board Meeting, either via Zoom at 7:00 PM or in-person at the Village Hall at 7:30 PM.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None. I don't know who. Is making that noise, I have to mute them. Okay. We're gonna do, if I, the Suez, after we do a Stage Street, for the interest of the time of, of one of the village engineers. So we're gonna do the continued public hearing for Stage Street LLC, 124 Route 59, for the Office Warehouse Building for amended site plan.
Okay, I'll make that motion to continue that public hearing.
No, no, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do this agenda item.
Yeah.
Which one are we gonna do?
Stage Street.
So we have to continue that public hearing, don't we?
Right.
Yeah, we're gonna hear that application, but I think we asked Valerie to put together a resolution, which she did.
Right, so in the packet was the two resolutions, one was the regular resolution and one was the override, and I included the, the narrative from Paul Baum that we didn't have at the last meeting, and the GML. And I also included the ZBA resolutions, just for your reference.
Oh, that's what that was, okay.
Yes, that was just as a reference, so that you saw that they received their variances through the ZBA, and I only emailed, because I forgot to put it in the packet, was the ARC. That was the reason, one of the other reasons they had to continue, they went to the ARC on May 17, and I emailed that with the other two items that came today.
And they look favorable upon the building.
Yes, they had no issues and no concerns.
So. I guess for this application, do any of the board members have any other concerns or questions?
Who's, who's here representing the applicant?
Paul Baum.
Mr. Chairman, Paul Baum, Attorney for the applicant, and we have Rachel Burrice, the engineer, for the applicant as well.
Okay. Can you just give us the brief summary of what we're doing, of, of the application?
Absolutely, as Suzanne indicated, we were asked before the board on March 29. At that time, the board did not have my supplemental narrative addressing the GML review letter, and so the board adjourned it, so that they had a chance to review that. And that we also needed to get approval from the Architectural View Committee, which we obtained on May 17. We also submitted revised plans and responses to all the agency comments, the sewer district, the Department of Health, the Department of Transportation, Nelson Pope Voorhees, Eve Manquuso, Tom and Fire Department, as well as the Rambo Department of Public Works. The last time Mr. Hirsch was here, he commented that he wanted, didn't want any landscaping between his property and our property, he wanted to see a fence. These most recent plans show a fence that starts from the designated street line, go back four feet high while it's in the front yard, and then after it passes the front yard, it goes up to six feet to provide screening between the two properties. We have reviewed the draft resolutions that have been submitted for the board's consideration, we have no comment on those, other than we note that the, that the resolution does not reference the most recent plans that we were submitted, that were last revised on April 27, 2022, and has a prior revision date of September. So it needs to be updated to show that these are the plans that the board is reviewing, and we would request that the board override the GML denial, and comment 7:13 and 18 of their recommendations. And grant us the waivers for parking stall size and loading berth size, and grant us the special permit and approve the final site plan as submitted. It's been a long time coming, as you know, this application started pre-COVID, it's been going on for well over two years, got stalled for many, many months. This is our fourth hearing before the Planning Board, I think the plans have been revised and adjusted to suit all the comments of all the outstanding agencies, as well as your consultants, and I have nothing further to add other than that, Rachel, you want anything to add?
No, I think you've covered it. Recent with the comments, the letter goes through everything, so if there's any specific questions, let me know. If you need me to share the screen for the map again, if anyone needs a refresher, I can do that, just let me know.
Rachel, for the interest of some of the new board members, maybe you could just show it real quick?
Sure.
I'll share the screen real quick, hold on.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
So, this is Route 59, it is a longer narrower property, and there are driveways along the one side, this is the turnaround, so you can come in back up and out if needed. This is building Warehouse A, Warehouse B, they both have their loading, the doors are shown, there's parking along the fronts. And there is a buffer in the back, this is the Indian Rock, Lackawanna Road Housing Development in the back. And just sort of like for perspective of where we are, and there is now a fence shown along the property line, is Mr. Hirsch, based on his request at the last meeting. And the variances were granted at the ZBA previously, so the bulk table has that information, and so based on the variances that were granted, this is now a compliant lot, a compliant plan.
Okay, thanks, thank you for that, thanks. Anybody have any questions? From the board? We covered this in some detail last time. Talking about anything to add or ask? Valerie, you, anything changed? Last time?
Nope, I think it's ready to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree, my only, all the engineering items have been addressed, my only comment was regarding the last revision date, as Mr. Baum has already noted.
Okay, so we'll have to change that in the.
Yes.
Resolution. Otherwise, like I said, we covered this pretty extensively last time, I think. This is pretty much the same.
Same but better.
Same but better. Okay, so can we open this up to the public? Make the motion to open the public hearing, is that we ready for that?
Yep, I think so, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're very cautious.
Someone's, someone's too loud there.
I'm not sure who it is, if, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand, and I'll, and I'll unmute you, and it's a reminder you have three minutes for the public hearing. I'm just checking. Let's see if I have anybody. I don't see anybody with their hand.
Looks like Danielle Mina is waving her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, Danielle, go ahead.
That's okay, I'm sorry, my new laptop doesn't give me the option to raise my hand, and thank you, Mr. Friedland, I appreciate that. Um, I guess my question is, the overriding the GML disapproval? Is that really a good idea? I mean, it, it's pretty clear what their objections are, and they are a little more, I guess, objective, as they don't live in the area, they oversee the entire county. Anyone have any thoughts on that? I mean, does their opinion not mean anything? I guess that's what I'm beginning to wonder sometimes.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else deserve?
I don't see any.
Maybe we should, Danielle, I guess the thing is, the GML is a guide for the planning board. If the applicant can prove that what the GML says is different.
Uh huh.
Board has the, the authority to override the GML, and we've worked very closely with this applicant. I know Paul said it's been going on for two years, but we probably had five or six meetings.
Probably more than that.
Things of that nature.
Okay.
And has demonstrated that what was in the GML could be overridden by the board.
And the board members are comfortable, they feel that the applicant has, has presented, I guess, evidence that the GML is not, that their objection is not accurate?
It's not that it's not accurate, it's just that the applicant showed a way to alleviate on the GML, there's been other applications like Dunkin' Donuts.
No, I know, I know.
They said no, but when the applicant worked with us and they put a plan together that made sense, and the same thing happened here, the board has the right by a super majority, so that means the majority of the board has to vote to override.
Okay, all right, John, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you, John, for the information.
Yeah, I know, it's kind of a strange thing if you haven't been through the process and.
If I can add another point. Of the overrides, which I think there are five in total. Three of them. Deal with zoning board issues, not planning board issues. So. To my recollection, this was considered when the zoning board. Heard their application for the variances, and they dealt with those three items, and overrode those disapprovals. Already. The remaining items. Deal with the fire inspector and the sprinkler system. Lumens with regard to lighting. On the property. And the amount of room between the retaining wall and the property line to landscape buffer. So, with regard to the lumens. That's obviously not a legal question, that's engineering slash planning. And I believe. Both the engineer, although I don't want to speak for either of you, and the planner, did not feel that. That was not properly addressed by the applicant. And then, same thing with regard to the retaining wall to the east of the property line. And providing a landscape buffer. And the applicant is installing, at the request, I think of the neighbor, a six-foot fence, which. I guess could be argued. Provides equal, if not better, buffering to the neighbor than landscaping. That's it.
Okay, anybody else, Suzanne, anybody hands up, anybody's hand up?
I don't see any other hands up.
I don't see anything either.
And I don't see anyone on the camera with their hand, so. No.
Okay. Okay, so then walk us through the next steps, please, if you don't mind, just to do this right the first time.
Well, if none of the board members have any questions, and no one else from the public wants to speak, would certainly be appropriate for the board, oh, someone raised.
There is a hand now. Richard iPhone. You can speak, please state your name and address for the record. Wait, you have to unmute yourself. Unmute yourself, I unmuted you.
Good.
Yes, now we can hear you.
Good evening, my name, Richie O'Neill, 31 Lackawanna Trail. I had offered a couple of comments in the past along the same line, but with all the new board members, I thought I'd bring it up again. With the, the water, right now, the ground is actually acting as a sort of a sponge, between the dirt, the trees, everything else, the water will soak down. But now with the pitch going back towards the back of the property and not towards Route 59, the water's gonna flow downhill, and now it'll be hardscape, it'll be buildings, so there will be much less grass or trees or whatever, so it's gonna flow towards Lackawanna Trail. I know Rachel in the past has said that it's been designed to accommodate whatever amount of water is expected to come down, and that would be great, but I guess my question is, what if it doesn't? What happens? What's, what's the recourse for, is everyone down here on their own, or what's, what happens then? Are we just flooded?
Okay, thank you so much for that.
So, crickets.
There's another person who's just raised their hand, Heather Federico.
Unmute, Heather.
Unmute yourself.
Unmute. Thank you.
Sorry, yeah, I just, I just heard Richard's point there, I, I really wanted to say, we had the same problem on Hillside Avenue, everything was engineered beautifully, it looked great on paper, and the road has been flooded four times, it has actually wasted away the side of the roads, and so far, there's been no compensation for any of the people who have suffered damages, so good luck with that, Richard, I just wanted to let this board know. The EPA, the DEP have, and the DEC have issued tons of letters asking the applicants to do certain things, and they just haven't, so, Richard, I would be very worried if I were you, maybe get an attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't.
Anybody else?
I don't see anybody else. No, I don't see anyone in the audience raising their hand. That's it.
Okay, so there's nothing else, I think we should proceed.
Well, if you're, if you want to, it's up to you if you want to close the public hearing.
Does anybody else have anything to say? Any comments from the board? No, doesn't seem like, seems like everything's been covered. Okay. Okay, so yeah, so let's make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
I don't know where all that noise is coming from. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay.
Hey, just.
Yeah.
Has already been adopted. You have before you two proposed resolutions, one dealing with the overrides of the GML, the other dealing with. An approval, should you be someone applying to grant it? They would have to be separate motions.
And it's one override and one approval?
The order, the override would come first.
Okay, and the approval is for the special permit and the site plan?
Correct.
And that's two, is that two separate motions?
No.
In themselves, that's one?
Yep.
Okay, I thought we did them as two in the past, special permit and site plan, that'll be one, okay, so the GML override first, and the special permit and site plan second.
Do we need to read the whole GML override resolution?
No.
Or can we just refer to it?
Do you want to reference it by number, Dan?
Definitely.
And we're gonna do the GML overrides first. For the disapproval on number one.
So, one second, I got two copies of the. Are they different, the two GML override resolutions?
One says override, and one says, right, you got two of this.
I got two of the overrides and one resolution.
Okay, you just got an extra override.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Fine. Okay. Okay, so Suzanne, you'll read the disapprove, the overrides? Or do we not need to read them?
Disapproval number one.
Sorry, do we need to read the whole thing, or?
It's up to you, it's up to you. Or I could just read the number, and then you can.
Well, we have them in our packets, but they were online on the link?
Yes.
Yeah, they were, okay.
So do you want to override number one? I need a motion, who's moving, who's second, and a vote.
Okay, so we'll be doing. Five of these?
Correct.
And we're gonna do them separately?
Yes, by number.
Okay. So I make a motion to override. GML comment number one.
Second.
Have to reference the actual GML?
No, it is number one of the GML.
It is number one, the GML.
Right, but the date.
Oh, the date of the GML is March 10.
Yeah, March 10, 2022, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Make the motion, John, you seconded it?
Yep.
Okay.
Now I need a vote, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, if that's okay?
Thanks.
Okay, Maurice Roth.
Yes.
Okay, if you have any reason, you can state it, if you don't, that's fine.
We don't need, we don't need to provide a reason if we're overriding?
Dan, do you want reasons?
In the resolution.
It's in the resolution, okay, so, Mordecai Grinberger?
Yes.
Maurice Friedman?
Yes.
John Cornelius?
Yes.
And Chairman Friedland?
I'll vote yes. The reasons stated before, some of this is on the zoning board, and.
I gotta, I gotta mute everybody, because there's background noise.
Is it from me?
I, I'm not sure, it might be. Now I can't hear you, Yehuda.
Was that better, was it quieter?
Yeah, it was you.
Okay, so I'm gonna. Okay, let me try that again.
Okay.
Okay, I'll vote yes, really for the reasons stated before.
So.
The zoning board approved it, and, you know, they, they provided the variances that they needed to, and, yeah, I think the applicant provided a satisfactory reason.
All right, so the motion's carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay.
Okay, for just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was gonna make the motion to this, to override GML comment number two.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll, I'll do a roll call vote. Maurice Friedman?
Your moment of safety.
Yes.
Mordecai Grinberger?
Yes.
Maurice Roth?
Yes.
John Cornelius?
Yes.
Chairman Friedland?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero on disapproval number two. Go ahead.
Make a motion to override GML comment number three.
I'll second.
Okay, it's. Mordecai second, okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Mordecai?
Yes.
Maurice?
Yes.
John Cornelius?
Yes.
Maurice Friedman?
Yes.
And Chairman Friedman?
I'll vote yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay, next one is. Number four, item number 13 about the lumens.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to override GML comment number four.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Maurice Friedman?
Yes.
Mordecai Grinberger?
Yes.
Maurice Roth?
Yes.
John Cornelius?
Yes.
Chairman Friedland?
I'll vote yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero. And then the last item?
I'll make the motion to override, you know, comment number five.
I'll second.
That was Maurice?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I wasn't sure, okay. I'm gonna do roll call, Maurice Roth?
Yes.
Mordecai Grinberger?
Yes.
Maurice Friedman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just was looking, I don't think that it's GML four and five.
It's items, I wrote it in my notes, it's, it's item number 13.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's doing.
I was doing the numbers on the.
It's number in the resolution, but.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this is.
I was like, oh no, they don't, like, because. I was like, oh no, they don't, like, cause one, two, and three matched. Uh, or the beginning was matching, and then I started to get confused. Alright.
It's.
We got too far.
Okay, sorry about that. The last three was seven, thirteen, this is eighteen.
Okay, so I did Roth, uh, Grinberger, Friedman, and Cornelius. Chairman, uh, Friedland?
Yes, I, yes.
And I voted yes.
Yes, you did, I got you, John, thank you.
Okay.
Motion carries five to zero. And that's on the overrides. And now we need to do the, uh, site plan and the special permit. Yoda.
Because of the confusion, uh, why don't we list, uh, again, uh, the the numbered items, uh, from the GML that the, uh, planning board just overrode?
Okay.
Let me.
Number one of the GML. Number two of the GML, I'm just matching the GML to the resolution. Item number seven of the GML. Um, item number thirteen of the GML. And item number eighteen of the GML.
We match.
Okay. I just checked the GML to, it's just the way they were numbered in the resolution. Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, I make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan for 124 Route 59 in Armont. And do we need to adopt this resolution, or is it, we're just we're just approving the special permit and site plan? Dan?
I think we just have to approve it.
Okay. Okay, so that's the motion to approve the special permanent site plan for 124 Route 59. Do I have a second?
I'll second the resolution.
Okay, um, roll call vote. We have, uh, Mordecai Grinberger?
Yes.
Um, Maurice Roth?
Yes.
Um, Morris Friedman?
Yes.
Uh, John Cornelius?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, Chairman Friedland?
There was a, um, an error with one of the dates in there, I think we wanted to change.
Yeah, I, I already corrected it on my copy, with, with the, uh, the revised plans being the date of, where is it, 4/27/22. And that'll be corrected before you come and sign it.
Okay, yes.
And I'm writing that down again. Okay. So motion carries five to zero. All in favor? None opposed?
Okay.
I thank the board for its, uh, lengthy review and, and the, all the suggestions that you've made and and for the approvals, and I know the applicant is very happy and is looking forward to building a nice project, so, uh, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one, thank you.
Have a good night.
Paul, take care.
Alright, bye, John, good to see you.
So.
Same here.
Uh, thank you, I'll say goodnight too at this time. Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, bye now.
Bye.
Um, we're going to, we, we changed the order. Uh, we are gonna do the, um, Suez Water of New York Inc., the New York PFAS, PFAS compliance for the New York Tomlin Waterwell Number 26 for a request for two ninety day extensions of the previously approved site plan and special permit for the proposed building at 239 Route 59. Um, that was just added today. Um, and there was a letter, Dan, I should read it into the record, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, it was dated May 25th, um, to the members of the board. Uh, I represent Suez Water New York and its application for site plan, special permit, wetlands, and variances to construct in addition to its water treatment facilities. Pursuant to paragraph sixteen of your board's resolution of site plan approval and special permit for the above matter, the approval expires a hundred and eighty days after the date granted. Work has been ongoing to try to resolve condition number eleven, which requires easement and permits from Orange and Rockland Utilities. The engineering departments for both utilities have been working diligently to achieve a compromise. Such compromise appears very possible, but unfortunately, the efforts have been very time consuming and agreement has not quite yet been achieved. Uh, if you might grant the two ninety day extensions of your approval as permitted under section 21079B of the Village Code, it would be very much appreciated. Sincerely, John B. Kurt Patrick, um, who is, um, one of their attorneys of Kilpatrick Law in White Plains, New York.
And if I could just, uh, chime in on this one. Um, this is in litigation. Um, and, uh, I've been dealing with O and R's attorneys as well as Suez's attorneys. Um, right now, O and R is not a party to the action. Um, but they're clearly affected by this, so, um, the, um, attorney for Suez has been, uh, very kind in granting, uh, the village uh, multiple adjournments, um, to either put in an answer or make a motion. Um, and, uh, I think it would, uh, be appropriate for the board, uh, to show them the same accommodation in, in terms of granting, uh, the requested, uh, additional time.
They're requesting two, two extensions at the same time for a total of a hundred and eighty days?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and we can do that?
Yes.
We can do it, it's been done a lot. Um, and, um, uh, it saves them from having to keep track of it. Um, it's provided for in the code. Uh, it doesn't say you can't do them at the same time.
And after this hundred and eighty days, can they get an extension beyond that? Uh, if they'll need it?
I don't know off the top of my head whether they would have to, uh, apply for reinstatement.
Yes, that's correct, Dan.
Cause I think that happened recently.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion need to grant them the extensions?
Yes. Based on the letter of Mr. Kilpatrick, uh, dated today.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Okay. Any comments from anybody?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant them the two ninety day extensions based on the letter from Mr. Kilpatrick dated yesterday, which was the twenty
fifth.
Yeah, may. So I make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? Okay, so motion carries five to zero on their extension. Okay.
Okay.
Um, the next item is the public hearing for the Rolling Hills subdivision at 71 Church Road, the two lot subdivision, with minor subdivision preliminary plat that was submitted.
Take off, thank you.
Right, thank you, Valerie, have a good night.
Good night, pal.
Okay, and we have John Nozak gone, who's acting as, um, the engineer and planner for, uh, Fusco Engineering.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, John.
Hi.
And just to be clear, they represent the village.
Yes. And we have Jesse Coakley, who's representing the applicant from Colliers Engineering, see you, man.
Good evening, everyone.
Just because this is a new one, we have not seen this before.
This is a brand new one, yes.
Okay. A fresh one. Okay, Mr. Coakley.
Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen here. I mean, everyone can see, okay?
Yes.
Great. So this is a property located at seventy-one Church Road in Armont, is in the R thirty-five zoning district. It was previously approved for a six lot subdivision back in two thousand and seven. Um, I believe that was including initial packet, just for reference here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is an existing dwelling on the property that was previously going to remain as lot six. And then there were five additional new lots being proposed with this cul-de-sac going down the center of the property. Uh, the overall property is about six point eight acres. But this was back in two thousand and seven and never actually got signed or recorded or filed. Um, current owner, um, owns the property and is looking to just keep the single family home on what they're calling proposed lot one, which would be just over one acre. Um, and then the rest of the property, which would be about five point six six acres, uh, would be subdivided off and, and sold, um, to someone else who, you know, can do whatever they would want with it, but that would be subject to a, a separate application, of course. Um.
And why wouldn't that, why wouldn't that be, uh, impermissible segmentation under SEAKER?
So what we are showing here in this case is the provisions for a single family home. So this is what.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about what you just said. Well, the, the future intention.
Oh.
The future intention being known.
No, it is.
For making this application.
No. We do not have any intention of what they're doing. We have no knowledge of, we have, we have no knowledge of what is happening with this other rock. This is just.
Way to read back what you just said, there is, but not right now.
If that's how we was thinking, that was that is my apologies, that is not the intention here. This is strictly something that the current owner is looking to keep their home and subdivide off the rest.
What do you think you said about the, uh, other portion of the lot?
Dan, can I jump in for a second?
Yeah.
Can you explain your question? Cause I didn't, I didn't understand that. What was your concern?
Me?
Yeah.
If someone has a plan and they present it to the board um, in, uh, a, uh, with the in, intention of only building a portion of it for now, but they know what their plans are in the future. When you do the environmental review, um, there's a concept under SEAKER that you can't do what's called segment, a segmented review. And a segmented review occurs when potentially, uh, as in this case, potentially, uh, they're only applying for a small subdivision, but it is their intention to either develop, come in for further subdivision or five, of five or six slots. Or to sell it off to someone who could come in and, uh, create five to six lots. Now, um, there is both impermissible segmentation and permissible segmentation. So, um, it may become an issue when it comes to any consideration under SEAKER, whether this is segmentation, and if it is segmentation, whether it's permissible segmentation or impermissible segmentation.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Coakley, I cut you off.
No, that's okay, that was a good question, and, and I appreciate Mr. Crash Hour explaining his question as well, because if I made that implication or that indication, then I misspoke. We have no knowledge, I have no knowledge of any future plans for the property. I was simply bringing up the prior plan to show what was previously approved. And this is just simply a two lot subdivision. The owners inherited this through, um, trust from their mother. Um, they want to simply keep their home that they own on this lot and subdivide off the rest, because they don't want to pay the taxes on six point eight acres, and it's for sale, and that would be it. That's the end of this application. We have no future intention or knowledge of what anyone will want to do with that. At CDRC, um, Mr. Fusco Engineering had the letter um, about showing at least the provisions for a single family home, so that was edits the plan here showing that it would comply. Um, but there is no intention to, to construct a single family home on that lot as part of this application. It's simply a land subdivision of two lots. That is it.
What was, what was the requirement to put the house on this second property? At least in the plans or proposed building?
I believe yes.
We, we, we requested that that be done because we want to make sure that we don't create a lot that's potentially unbuildable, uh, so we want to make sure that if a lot is proposed, that there's some use in the town that can service that lot, thereby not creating, uh, an unbuildable lot. So the reason for showing the house is to verify so that if and when this board approves a subdivision, we know that it can at least support a single family home. Now, that's not to say somebody might try, come in with a different application for a site plan or something else. But we want to make sure as a minimum that it's buildable for something to prevent uh, an unbuildable lot being approved, that's all.
Okay, and that rectangular proposed structure suffices for that?
Yes, it demonstrates that they have provisions for water and sewer there, and that a single family home could be constructed. So, uh, you know, so i- if and when this board approves this lot, um, we, we know that we're not creating, you know, an unbuildable lot, a potentially unbuildable lot, which we definitely want to avoid doing, so. Uh, if he doesn't have to build it, he can leave it vacant forever if he wants, or someday come in with a different application, but at least we know it's buildable for something.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Coakley.
You can unshare the screen now.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um.
Yeah, anybody on the board have anything to say? Cause I'm curious to hear from the.
Attorney on, on this application?
No, there is not. It was just the homeowner and, and myself.
Alright, Suzanne Correspondence?
Uh, we received a letter, uh, yesterday from Rockland County Sewer dated May thirteenth. And it's, um, basically saying that the details for the sanitary sewer construction must comply with the district's construct, construction standards and should be shown on the plans. Details for its sanitary sewer connection are subject to the approval from the town of Ramapo. And that the approval for the app, actual, application um, with one existing family residence on lot one, a conceptual single family home, and lot two does not require the applicant to pay an impact, impact fee. Um, however, if the use or the occupancy of the site exceeds ten units, the district will require. the district will require to further review it and the owner will have to pay an impact fee. And this is from Joseph LaFiance, the engineer too. Um, I did send it to the town of Ramapo. I did not get a letter back as of yet. Um, and then the other correspondence came from the Rockland County Environmental Health dated May twenty-third. Um, basically saying, and I think this is going back to what was just discussed, that the submission did not include a detailed plan for the proposed development on Lot Two. Therefore, cannot be determined what, if any, permits or approvals may be required from this office. Um, a detailed plan with proposed utilities is uh until a plan is submitted for review. Should the board require store management system to remediate the increase in impervious surface for Lot Two, an application must be made to the Rockland County Department of Health for a review of the system and compliance with the county mosquito, mosquito code. And that's from Liz Mello, who is the senior public health engineer. Um, I did send it to the Drainage Agency. I have not received that any from, anything from them either. As of today. Both these letters um I had received via email. I did not even get the hard copies in the mail as of yet. And no G M L was required for the record.
Yeah, thanks. And I know the engineer is John. Who's the uh, who's the planner for the village on this?
That's, that's us two.
Okay. That's the only one. Okay. Okay, do you uh, what do you think of this, John?
Uh, uh, me, John, or John?
Sorry, you, John, John Fusco.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, it's the, it's, it's a lot that meets zoning. Um, and the, the owner is, is looking to subdivide so that they can retain ownership of the, of the existing home. Um, and he's made it clear that he has no intentions of building anything on it at this time. So uh, 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 of course, we want to make sure that it's buildable for something, which he's shown on the plan. So uh, a- as long as he's willing to come back to the planning board for any, anything, any construction, any building. And you can even have him put a large note on the plan to that effect. Uh, you know, the, the, anything he wants to do, he would need to come back before this board for site plan approval or whatever, or whatever uh, special use permit approval, as long as he's okay with that and he understands that, then I don't really think, you know, I think the board can proceed. That's my opinion.
That means he would have to come back, even if it's a, a, what you might call a typical single family house.
I, I think he would because we're having him show it on the plan just to demonstrate that it's possible so that we know we don't create a lot that's not buildable. But he doesn't really want to do it. So if i- he, if, if, you know, to make him show engineering details, water details and sewer details for a house he really has no intention of building, you know, seems kind of pointless. So as long as he's willing to come back to this board and obtain all the approvals, even if it's for a single family home, as long as he's willing to do that, then I, I, and and it's, and the note is clear on the plans, I, I think the board can proceed.
And that requirement to come back to the planning board would apply even to um someone who buys the property from him?
Absolutely.
In terms of the shape of the new lot, the second lot, or is there anything in the code about uh?
Uh, I couldn't find anything. We took, we took a look at all the setback requirements and and it appears to meet all the uh zoning requirements for that particular zone. Um, I don't have the map in front of me, but uh, it is on, it is on the map and he has shown the proposed dimensions and they do meet all the minimums.
We do comply with lot width and lot frontage as well.
Okay. What is the frontage on the second one?
Uh, the minimum is a hundred feet and that one is, I believe, a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-five feet. And we would take no issue with um adding a note, as John suggests, you know, to the plan requiring any future applicant to, to come back to the board for approval on that lot.
Okay. And John, John Fusco, in terms of the site plan, the uh, the plan they submitted is the subdivision uh is, I don't see it here. Um, yeah, that's satisfactory? That was done correctly?
Yeah, the, the both, excuse me, both lots meet the, the zoning requirements and there's actually no proposed construction associated with this application. So he's not proposing anything. So there's, from an engineering standpoint, there's really nothing to review.
But all, anything that needs to be marked on there is, is there?
Is existing, correct.
Okay. Any comments from anybody?
Seems pretty straightforward.
It does. Suzanne, have, have we done one of these since, since I've been on the board, a straight subdivision like this?
You have not.
No. It's too simple.
And they, they don't come that often here. She's not allowed to develop. I, I think in, I think I've maybe done three, two or three.
Okay.
John, is there anything on SEACR that we need to know about?
Uh, I mean, I don't see any reason why this wouldn't be considered uh uh, you know, exempt. There's no proposed construction at all. So I, I mean, I don't know if Dan wants to comment on, but I don't even know if we need to, to do a SEACR because there's nothing proposed.
That I, I don't know. Dan? Oh, he stepped away. Okay, we can ask him when he comes back.
Yeah, in the meantime, we could open up to the public if any comments.
So who's opening, you're opening the public hearing?
Make the motion to open the public hearing.
Motion. I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mordecai.
Dan's back.
Oh, favor, okay. Um, if you'd like to uh comment, please raise your hand or I'm looking at you. And if you could state your name and address for the record, um.
It's Marty, Marty wants to talk.
You gotta unmute yourself, Marty.
Thank you, but, thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and John Cornelius at all. Um.
Welcome, welcome to the, to our board.
All right, uh, Martin Travell, thirty-seven Montclair Avenue. I share um a hundred and ninety-five foot um bound, you know, property line with the Tim Chuck property. Um, just stating that for the record and have uh shared that for quite some time. Um, this may be, you know, premature. This is probably something that I would raise, you know, uh, more emphatically uh when in the future this property would be built upon. Back in two thousand and five, as was mentioned, there was an application called Rolling, um, I have the old map, Rolling Meadows subdivision. And uh, which we all know never went anywhere and the property was never developed and never sold. Um, but after a lot of um, um, you know, meetings with planning board, uh, it was determined that the back end of uh the property going towards uh Euro Strive, partially bisecting my property line was going to be considered a conservation easement by the village. Um, but I think I just wanted to restate that, that that was part of it. Um, also, um, the property is currently on sale. You know, I, 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 that wasn't mentioned. I'm just stating that for the record by Keller Williams Hudson Valley. Um, you know, uh, advertising five point six nine acres of buildable land in Aramont. So it's on the market as buildable land, uh, stating it's currently going through a process, which we're here now doing. Um, I really don't have much more. The only other thing was, and again, probably a future planning board meetings with respect to uh mapping trees and doing as much preservation of trees that provide for uh wonderful uh, you know, water absorption, et cetera. And that was also done in two thousand and five. I just wanted to put that out and have it sit with the planning board for, you know, a future thought. And that's about all I have to say at the moment, and I appreciate uh you giving me the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Please either raise your hand in the picture. I'm, I'm going from screen to screen. Or please, um, Mr. Roth. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, the name is William Roth. I'm at forty-one Montclair Avenue and I also am adjacent to the uh second lot, which will be uh put in. And uh, I know that it sounds like you're simply approving separating it into a sep- separate empty lot. But uh, would like to remind you that about a third of that lot traveling east is not only all wooded, which means a lot of trees, but also it starts to get quite a bit of wetland. I would believe that the uh village and town maps would actually show a stream going north, south, right through that area. So all of that would have to be taken into consideration when a proposal is made to do anything else on that land uh separately. So I don't know how you put that on the record, but seeing how the uh, you would be the same board and council dealing with it. I want to make sure that people are aware of that and then everything else, that there not be so many exceptions that they crowd too much onto that land that it affects the uh life and uh uh quality of life in the whole area for Montclair, Eros and Amanda, which are all the areas that are abutting uh this land.
Thank you, Mr. Crow. Um, Teresa O'Leary.
Hi, Teresa Leary. I'm at fifty-seven Church Road in Aramont. I just wanted to get clarity. I just want to make sure I understand correctly. Um, the note that would be put on the, the subdivision plan, exactly what would that make happen? So if somebody wanted to build, they would come back through the entire planning process? Could somebody just clarify that?
The property that um would be Lot Two um, that they would have to come back to the planning board if they wanted to develop that beyond uh, it being deemed to be a single family lot at that point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Dan, when you had stepped to, I don't see, oh, I'm sorry, there's a wrong person. Marty.
I, 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 I spoke.
Oh, okay, you just had your hand still up. I'm sorry.
Well, there's another Marty, no? Ms. Holly, if I, I just need thirty seconds.
Because, okay, there's a different Marty, though, who wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Crow, you could speak.
I, I promise you thirty seconds, just uh, the last gentleman that spoke on uh, on Euro Strive with respect to this uh stream and wetlands, you know, that is true. And again, that's something that uh we would address uh when uh in the future, there would be requests to build on, on, on the property on that lot. That's all. So I can car with him and it's on my property as well, standing water and going on to those uh, onto that lot as, as a uh north, south stream. Thank you.
Mr. Marty.
Right, Marty Baltax, I'm at fifteen Eros Drive. Uh, ju- just the point, when the, the uh prior group uh had planned to build, the one that did not build, um, I remember receiving a phone call asking if I was willing to accept the sum of money for them to put something through my property, which uh, being in, not even being a novice at this, I don't know if it had to do with drainage or, or, or some kind of a line or if it was to hook up to sewage, I'm not sure, but they wanted access to my property. Uh, I, I, I was of the opinion that my next door neighbor, who's no longer living in that house, had accepted their offer, but I don't believe they did any construction of any sort. But so I guess there's something, and either the way, the lay of the land or, you know, I'm, and I'm being very, I am untechnical in terms of this, that, that uh, they, they required use of neighboring land. Uh, and I, I rejected that from them uh, a- at the time.
I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just looking to see if there's anyone else. I don't see anyone else. I'm just seeing if anyone in the picture is raising their hand. Uh, I don't see anyone. No. Uh, Dan, when you stepped away, there was a question about SEACR and um John Nozak. If you could answer what we were talking about, you said you didn't think SEACR would be required because it's straight.
I, I was of the opinion that uh, you know, because there's apps, there's no proposed construction here, none whatsoever, that uh it would probably fall under the type two exempt uh, uh, SEACR. Uh, so I, that being the case, uh, we would not actually have to make a SEACR resolution unless, unless Dan feels otherwise.
No, I agree. Um, as but uh, I'm doing that only because uh, Mr. Coakley stated that uh, he uh wasn't going to be um further subdividing the property. Um, and clearly, um, there was uh representation that there's for sale signs. Um, so um, it appears that at some point someone will buy uh, the balance of the, of, well, will buy Lot Two uh, and make application to the planning board. And at that point, um, uh, it may be um beyond a uh, uh, type two action, but what's before the board tonight is a type two action, requiring no further review under SEACR.
Okay, thank you. And thanks, John.
No one else looking to speak? Doesn't look like it.
No.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead.
Are the board members comfortable with approving the subdivision? So we can think about closing the public hearing?
I'm okay with it.
As John.
Very simple. John, John had no issues.
I think it would just be, I think it would just be subject to maybe my office working with John on the, the note that we want to add to the plan.
Right, there's that language for that.
Yes.
Hi.
Oh, that's, you can work with us and we'll give you the wording and uh, just, I think it's a good idea, says inevitably the person who buys Lot Two, I'm, I'm sure is going to have intentions of building. And so it'll be very clear to them with the note on the plans that they're coming back to this board.
Yep.
Anything.
I agree.
No other public comment, Suzanne? I'm sorry? No other public. No, no, there's no other public comment. I'm sorry, I was just letting someone in. No, there's no other public comment. So I don't know what you want to do about the public hearing. Well, if the board members are good, we should probably close it, approve it and move on.
You want to make that motion, John?
I make a motion to close the public hearing on Rolling Hills subdivision at seventy-one Church Road.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Kind of first, okay. And it's just a subdivision, right, Dan?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision of Rolling Hills located at seventy-one Church Road in the village of Aramont. Subject to note, and is going to be placed on the plans.
Um, and payment of.
And payment of any and all outstanding professional fees. And also based on. Plans of.
Yeah, I have them here too.
Signed by Donald Schnell, last dated. Help me out here, four twenty one twenty two, I believe.
That is correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's the motion.
You have a second yet?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maurice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay. New business?
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the time and the conversation tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good.
Have a good one.
Have a good night.
I just want to remind everybody about the training that's coming up. Especially. There's the three set, the session. Well, there's one tonight, which obviously you can't do session two, but the session three for planning boards on June sixteenth. Which you should really take if you haven't taken session three, and you should try to take the session that. Is towards the board that you're on, which is planning board. There is a session three. For zoning board on May thirty first, but for your certification, you should try to take the one that's. Relates to the board that you're on, and just to remind everyone. And the only items we will have for the June meeting are the two that we just continued from this evening. For the Skill Building Center and sixteen Murray for the Airmont Shool. And if I know or hear anything about an extension on the remote meetings, I'll let everyone know.
So those the only two that are going to be at the next meeting, or those the ones?
Yeah, I I did not receive any new submission.
And it's the deadline. So times that note.
I'm sorry?
That will be the deadline.
Oh, the deadline would have been, it's passed. Okay, that's why I'm saying. The deadline to the June meeting was May nineteenth. It's usually about four, four and a half weeks before because I have to send out for G M L and comments. So right now we do not have any new, we just have those two continued. The Airmont Shool continued because they're going to A R C. And the skill building continued for some time.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I was just asking, the Airmont Shool got their zoning approvals?
They did get their zoning approvals, and they're going to A R C on June fourteenth, and planning board is the twenty third. And it was determined they only needed one variance. You'll get a copy of the resolution for for the meeting. And that's that's all I have. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
No, just the usual, the Zoom is going on.
But I just need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
The Zoom meetings are going on till when? Do we know yet?
Till June fifteen.
She extended it one week.
Yeah.
One week.
I don't know why, one week, but.
Pushing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dan, you still seem to think it's going to get another extension?
Yes.
Okay, but they they love to do it like the last day that it's up. So we'll find out on June fifteenth. If there's another extension, they always wait to the last day of the previous extension. I don't know why they do that.
Well, i- if you read the statute. I don't even think that they. Accomplished what they were seeking to accomplish. I think. What they did was they made it so no matter what. Even if you do it via, you allow it to be done via Zoom. That a majority of the board has to be in the same spot. Meaning, in our case, Village Hall. Two other members could be elsewhere. But. If their intention was to keep it the way it is. The way I read it, they did not do that.
Okay.
Okay. Wow, okay, so no other new business?
Nope.
Okay.
Dan's going to give us ethics date when he has time. We're due ethics class, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that.
Yes.
A lawyer, okay.
Come on, you've taken my class before.
Yes.
Come on, we hurry up. I got a glass of wine to drink here.
Okay.
Go. Where's the invite, John?
Okay, so John, you want to be honest again?
John, you want to do the adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All of them.
Everyone have a great Memorial Weekend.
You too.
Enjoy that one.
You too.
Everyone.
Take care.
Take care, good night.
Good night. Good night.